I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Easton, can we have the roll call, please?
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Cross here.
Mr. Stubbs here.
Mr. Potter here. All are present.
I'd like to move on to visitor comments. We have Mike Barhurst is here on behalf of the Citizens for Sinclair. This evening, any thought? We're going to talk about Sinclair and the levy that's coming up. So, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I certainly appreciate you taking a few minutes of your time to hear what I have to say tonight. My remarks will be brief. I just want to share a few facts and figures about what Sinclair means to the township and and then tell you a little bit more about the issue that's on the ballot this fall. You should have a handout. It's two-sided. If you could focus on this page right here that has German Township prominently portrayed at the top. During our most recently completed fiscal year, that'd be FY22, our fiscal year runs July 1 to June 30. There were 70 German Township residents enrolled at Sinclair in one form or fashion. Forty-three of them were actually high school students at the different, I believe I'm in Valley View country, am I right? And pardon me, I've been in local government my whole, my whole career, but I, I don't know, is there, is that the only public high school that serves the township?
For the most part, yeah.
And that would include private students or maybe homeschooled too. But there were 43 students who were enrolled through the College Credit Plus program. I assume you're passingly familiar with that program, very, very popular with students and parents. Township residents earned five degrees and certificates over the last year. They earned 739 credit hours in total, saving themselves about $199,000 had they chosen even, even my alma mater, Wright State University in Fairborn. So Sinclair offers a great value to the, to the public in that regard. We've, we've really striven to provide services to all, all sectors of the society, whether you be a transfer-oriented student like my two sons, Michael and Ethan, both whom are Eagle Scouts. I made my way through here many, many times on the way to Woodland Trails on their way to Eagle, who they both used Sinclair as a launching board, launching pad for their careers further on. One graduated from Wright State and graduated from OSU. So I know kind of firsthand what, what Sinclair has to offer. On the second sheet, a few facts and figures about the levy. Issue 10 is it will be a zero, zero tax increase as a result of that. It is one mill. It's one of two levies that we have. But the one mill is, is what's up on the ballot this year. It expires, will, will cease collections at the end of 2023. So we're on the ballot now to give us a little bit of time to plan ahead. For 56 years, the voters in Montgomery County have supported Sinclair with one or two tax levies consistently. We've never had a levy fail. We'd like to think that's because we deliver good value for the taxpayers' dollar. The issue will be on the ballot on November 8th. I believe early voting starts tomorrow if I'm not mistaken. And generates about $9 million a year. That's about 6% of every dollar that the college uses to operate. So with that in mind, I would ask, ask for your support and entertaining questions you might have.
You said that that was one of two levies. How many mils does the other levy?
3.2.
3.2. And when does it expire, do you know?
It's, they'll be on, they'll be on five-year cycles. So it was the first levy, which we call Levy A internally. It was recently approved in 2017. So it's got, and it's a 10-year levy. It won't be back on the ballot for another five years.
I think Sinclair is just a great asset to this entire area.
Okay, next question.
Yes, sir. Do you have a breakdown of the attendees from German Township that went to Sinclair? What type of courses they took?
I can, I'll have to follow up on that. I don't have, I'll have details on that. I'll, maybe I'll email or that to Mr. Easton. Is that okay? Okay.
A lot of our township people, I think, ended at Sinclair after they graduate from the CTC. And I think there's a program where they get automatic entry into Sinclair. Is that correct?
Um, yes, through the tech prep program. If they fulfill certain requirements in high school, not only do they, are they automatically accepted? We are an open enrollment institution, so providing you have a high school diploma, you can pretty much enroll. More importantly, tech prep students are kind of, if you will, kind of fast track their, their high school curriculum is designed to latch right on to their, their curriculum once they get to Sinclair, and they also are eligible for a pretty sizable scholarship. Now, that would be one of the scholarships that are mentioned. I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to gloss over this, but the German Township residents realized about $180,000 in aid in FY22. So that's, that's knocking that number down. We have, we have the second lowest tuition in the state at about $136 a credit hour. So. Any other questions?
Very good.
Thanks for calling out.
All right, sure.
Yes, sir. We will.
Again, and be on my way.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Take care.
Any other visitor comments?
Did my gen report now?
You want to wait? You want to do it now? You want to wait till?
Wait, whatever you want.
Okay, that's, yeah, whatever. Wait. Uh, any other visitor comments, David? So few visitors tonight.
You don't mask up?
Yeah.
Mark asked me. That mark.
Mark, Mark, Mark. So anyway, let's go to the fiscal officer's report.
All right, good evening. Let me turn my camera on. Okay, good evening, everyone. I don't have a great deal tonight. First of all, I have given you the minutes of the September 12 meeting, and I understand there may be a couple of corrections, so let's go through them.
So basically, I found three little minor things. On the police report, the second paragraph should read SRO, it reads SRP. That's my second paragraph in the police report.
No, I haven't found it. Where, which paragraph?
It could be, it could be the first paragraph as part of its. Sorry.
Well, I will look for it.
Okay. So in the zoning report, the first paragraph should read Mrs. Close will be working in the zoning department Wednesdays and Thursdays. It was Fridays and Fridays.
Wednesdays and Thursday?
Thursdays.
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
All right.
And in my report, the last line should read, Dr. Cross did not attend the 9/6/22 German Town Council meeting as it was canceled. Didn't actually show up for the meeting and found out.
Say that again?
I didn't have to, I didn't show up, go down to the.
Oh, you didn't go down to council chambers? I did that one time.
So anyway, it should read that did not attend the 9/6/22, 9/6/22 German Town Council meeting as it was canceled.
All right.
Those are his terms.
Okay.
Okay.
With those, any other corrections? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the 9/12/22 regular meeting as corrected.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. You also have the financial reports for the month of September, and these include the September Fund Status Report, the year-to-date September Cash Summary by Fund, the month of September Cash Summary by Fund, the September Receipts, and the September Payments. I want to point out three items for you and for anyone in the room and who might, might be watching online. Receipt number 128 is for $18,000. It is from the state of Ohio. It is our annual power lease payment. And receipt 131, in the amount of $368,225.01, from the Montgomery County Auditor, is the settlement of the July tax collections. We do get monthly advances, and then after all the processing of the payments, tax payments twice a year, then they send us, send us a settlement amount. And that amount was offset by $14,884.91, which we pay to the county for their tax collection fees. We also pay for the state administrative fee and for election expenses. And finally, voucher 794 is for $86,000 and 964.93 to Ray Hensley Incorporated, and that is for the 2022 Chip Seal Program. Is there any questions about the financials?
Nope.
If there are none, could I ask for a motion to approve the financial reports, the September Bills, which are warrants 50605 through 50609, and vouchers 741 through 830?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the September financial reports and authorize the payment of September Bills, warrants 50605 through 50609, and vouchers 741 through 830 for payroll, direct deposit, tax withholding, and other electronic payments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. The Auditor of State has now issued our 2020 and 2021 Audit Report. It was issued back on September 13th. It is available to the public on the Auditor's website, but we also have a link to that report on our website. So you get a hyperlink and go directly to the Auditor's website if you wish to review it. I did submit to County Auditor Carl Keith the resolution that you approved at the September meeting to accept the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and to authorize the necessary tax levies for 2023. As a reminder, the pool levy does expire at the end of next year, so we will need to place a renewal or replacement levy on the ballot sometime next year. First National Bank will be at the Township on October 26 to perform their annual disaster recovery test. Back in 2018, the trustees approved the use of the Township Hall Meeting Room for the bank to run its operations in the event of a disaster at the bank. And this test is a requirement of the bank's auditors, takes about an hour. It's kind of a non-event, but it's important, obviously, for them. I mentioned earlier before the meeting started, I talked about the Lions Club. I am a member, and so I invite all Township children to attend our annual Ghost and Goblins Parade Costume Contest on October 31 at Veterans Memorial Park, and that will follow immediately after Beggar's Night from 6 to 8. And with that, that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Easton. We have the Police Department report.
First, I'd like to thank everyone who participated and attended our National Night Out. I believe that it was successful. I would like to especially thank Jamaica Run Golf Course for providing a golf court and the German Township Road Department for transporting that golf court, golf cart. I'd also like to thank Ms. Close for her hard work and dedication to making it such a spectacular event. School Resource Officer, I mentioned last month. The one-year memorandum of understanding has been signed between the Police Department and the Valley View School District with the goals of ensuring a safe learning environment for all children and adults who enter the school district property and/or attend school district events and activities to prevent and reduce potential harm related to incidents of school violence, to foster a positive school climate based on respect for all children and adults in the school, and to create partnerships with behavioral health and other care providers in the community for student and family referral. The memorandum of understanding covers the organizational structure, operational procedures, and duties of the SRO, his role or her role in response to both criminal activity and school policy violations, data collection and sharing, as well as the responsibilities of the school district. The financial commitment agreed upon to be paid by the school district to the township is $33,000, which will require an invoice to the school district for the days that the department provides an SRO. It is estimated to be around 172 days of the calendar year. Any problem resolution will be negotiated by the District Superintendent and the Chief of Police. Officer Marsden was chosen as the School Resource Officer. I believe Mr. Stubbs has seen him numerous times in the last month or so in this junior high. And Officer Marsden is splitting time between the high school and the junior high, Monday through Friday during school day.
So how does that work out with Officer Marsden going to Jackson Township?
We have an agreement with Jackson Township currently. If it is a criminal matter, he will be contacting them. However, we are also in talks with a county judge to swear Officer Marsden in as a constable for the court, which would then give him countywide jurisdiction, but with a special caveat that only limits him to school, the school district buildings and the SRO function, and any emergencies that might occur, maybe in Jackson Township, that he could go up there and help them out. Additionally, I believe Chief Shade, myself, Sergeant Brunner, and Sergeant Birch are also going to be, may be sworn in as constables. That way, if they have a natural disaster that only affects their township, Officer Marsden, Sergeant Birch, and myself can go up there and assist them. It's for the moment, not have any problems enforcing any laws. But again, those are only for school-related or emergencies.
So when, when our costs, the cost for the SRO exceed 33,000, then the rest comes out of ours, or how is that?
Yeah, currently, currently. I know we discussed previously about different government agencies donating back in based on what they were getting from the jet, but that hasn't come to fruition. So anything that that does would of course affect how much we would have impacted. So.
And this is only a one-year contract?
This is only a one-year contract. At the end of the year, I'm sure Superintendent Scholder and I will sit down and discuss whether it's beneficial, whether we should proceed in the next year or years to come. I would assume if we agree that it is something that we want to continue doing, then an MOU that is self, yeah, renewing from year to year would continue. And we would just sign another one probably late summer next year for the upcoming school year.
So Officer Marsden doesn't get really involved in any school discipline problems or anything like that, unless there's some fiscal violence or?
If a student is acting out and potentially violent, I'm sure he's nearby or in the same room to ensure that that person doesn't lash out and hurt someone else. But other than actually disciplining a student is the school's responsibility, as long as it's a violation of school policy. Now, if it's a crime, for example, someone hits someone else, that's assault. So then that would be a police matter.
So how many hours does Officer Marsden spend at the high school and at the junior high?
I would say he is probably there by 7:30 either school and probably leaves 2:45-ish. Many times if he's got work to do, comes back here, does, if there's a report or something he needs to do here, although he does have access to a, our report program from, from his office in the school, so he could do it there. But he does, does come back many times, wouldn't you say, during the week and stops in and make sure there's nothing, you know, else that needs accomplished for that day.
It sounds like it's been pretty popular. They didn't, didn't say anything about it last night's. That's not school meeting, school board meeting?
They didn't bring it up at all?
Well, we missed the first little bit of it.
I think Mr. Stubbs probably can provide a great deal of insight into it because he probably sees Officer Marsden at least twice a week.
Yeah, when he's in the building, I see him. It's nice to have someone there, and he's made it quite known that the kid, and he's made himself approachable, so the kids can talk to him if they, if they have an issue, they know that they can talk to him as a trusted, trusted person in the building. So it's definitely been a benefit, I believe, to the school district to have a resource officer there. Yeah, I think going forward, especially once the building's done and we're all on one campus, it'll be a whole lot easier for him specific, or whoever it is at that point in time. But he does a good job. He, I, I don't know when he's going to be at the junior high or the high school, so the kids obviously have no idea when he's going to be here, there, whatever. But just having his presence, I know he spends time in the cafeteria with them. He comes outside when they get to spend a little bit of time outside, and he's, he's always available and always around. So I know the kids, I've seen kids interacting with them multiple times, just walking down the hallway. They'll stop and talk to them, and I think that's a good thing. It creates a good interaction between police and the kids at a young age that hopefully they'll continue for the rest of their lives. So I think it's definitely beneficial, and I, I don't want to speak for Mr. Schaller, but I hope it is for the school district as well. And I personally hope this, this continues, and I hope the funding from the other entities will follow as well. So we can make this work and make this beneficial to the entire community, because that's what it's all about.
Mr. Keener. Name and address, please.
Oh, yeah, Dub Cross, 7444 South Stiber. So since we have an officer that is actually employed here, but in Jackson Township, shouldn't Jackson be, we invoice them for his hours so that we can, how does that work money-wise, since he's actually working in there?
Well, actually, the school is paying him to be there essentially for that time.
Eventually, we're going to run out of the money, right?
Yes, but based on the, what was in the memorandum of understanding, yes. However, if that, when we reach that point, we may say, hey, we can't have him go up there anymore, at least not as much because he's here. We, if he's in German Township, I see what you're saying, because that's our one. And if he's at the high school, he's in German Township. So.
And if he's there, he's in their township, but we're paying, well, somebody's paying for it, but eventually we're going to be paying for it.
Right. I understand what you're saying.
So.
We're writing his checks. We're just getting reimbursed.
Right. Or the, with the monies from the MOU.
Until that runs out.
Until that runs out.
How often am I going to be invoicing them? What do they ask?
I'll have to double-check and get an actual, if they want a monthly or whatever.
Because I wouldn't think they'd want it every pay period.
No, I wouldn't think so either. And plus, that's more work on you too.
Absolutely. I'll do that.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So I'm just wondering, should that be kept separate somehow so that when we get to that $33,000 is gone? You know, if he spent 50% here and 50% there, now there's still, I don't know, I just don't know how that's going to work.
Right. Don't have that answer for you today.
And we can get an estimate on when the 33,000 will run out, so that we can.
Figure that out. I forget the math, right? Sometimes.
We'll have to talk about it.
Who do you have? Mr. Keener?
Mark Keener, 7865 German Road. Mr. Stubbs with Officer Marsden now.
Junior High. Junior High.
Okay.
Yeah.
Junior High. Is Chief Shade still there? Because I know he was there quite a bit too.
He stops by a couple of times a week typically.
Okay, but he's not there as much as he used to since.
Um, I wouldn't say that. If they have something going on, I think in their township, he doesn't come, but he, he tries to come several times a week. Him and sometimes the sergeant as well. So it just depends on what they've got going on, but I don't think, I don't think having Officer Marsden there impacts what they're doing. Because the, the two, two townships work very well together. Yeah, so there's no issue with that. I, I, yeah, I don't.
It impacts what Jackson Township's doing at all.
So, and they know if, if there is an issue that happens at Farmersville, that they're going to be called. I mean, our, Marsden may be there, but they're going to be contacted so they can come deal with the, appropriately with the situation as it's in their jurisdiction. So. Yep.
And, and as of right now, Chief, Officer Marsden is not spending time at any German Township.
That is correct. They have hired, or I guess they're in the works. I don't know whether they've signed a memorandum with Germantown, but the officer from Germantown that has been going is Kirk Capel. And I don't know the particulars of that arrangement, but that is the, he is sworn in through Germantown. So he's the one that's at the other buildings that are in the city.
Anything else, Mark? Anything else, Chief?
Yes, actually, I have one more item. I would like to talk about full-time employees with particular what that entails towards sick vacation and holiday pay. And the reason I bring this up is Ms. Close is a 30-hour, full-time employee. Does sick vacation and holiday apply to her as a full-time employee?
I'm going to say yes.
Well, that's up for, that's up to you guys to discuss and decide. That's.
What's, what's the board policy? I'm assuming anything over, it has to be, it's federal, right? Anything over 28 hours is full-time, so I would assume she gets vacation benefits and all. That should be at least. That's, absolutely should be.
Is there anything in the personnel menu?
This is a new situation for us, a full-time at 30 hours. So no, I don't think we've dealt with that in the past or put it in the manual. Well, whether it's federal or not, whatever you, I think we need to officially decide and what, how that will be structured. Is it based on 30 hours? Is it based on 40 hours? What is it going to be based on? Because Mrs. Close's hours may well vary from 30. It's just, that's where she's kind of at a minimum at this point. It will not be overtime until she, of course, passes 40, which probably will happen rarely if ever. So we probably want to come up, or you will want to come up with some kind of a policy. We can make it retroactive to the beginning of her full-time status. But I think you need to spend some time thinking about how you want to structure that, and we need to put that in writing.
So if you've not been getting benefits at all?
You will be getting medical, of course, at the beginning of the year, but that's the only thing we've added at this point.
Can we amend the policy that we have, or do we need to come up with a new policy?
That's a good question.
That we can amend it down to 30 hours?
Let's pull the policy.
It makes a difference because if I don't get holiday pay, then I have to work those holidays to be able to get, because I have to get the hours to get my.
Yeah, that should be. There's no rule from the Fed or anything. We can just make that decision ourselves.
I don't have an answer for that. I've not done any research with the Fed. Okay, policy 4.2-1 under vacation leave, only full-time employees accrue vacation leave. And it's based on anniversary date, or in this case, it would probably be based on her date of going full-time at 30 hours. Sick leave is accrued based on anniversary. is accrued based on anniversary. Okay. Only full-time employees again accrue sick leave. It's accrued based on anniversary employment date. Sick leave is accrued at a rate of 10 hours a month, but that obviously assumes a 40-hour work week. And they can have up to hundred, 480 hours of sick time. Holidays, each full-time employee will be paid holiday pay, which is eight hours of regular pay while having the day off. In this case, it's not an eight-hour day. So I, it's something you'll want to consider. What I really recommend is that one of you take this project on and bring something back to the meeting in November. Recommendation in structuring what needs to change or be amended or added to this policy manual. I mean, I will tell you, the policy manual, in my opinion, needs to be thrown out and started over again. This is where we are at this point. All the things I'm reading, you all were effective in 1996 and haven't been changed since then. So.
Chief, do you think there's something you and I can work on in the next month?
Sure. I'm very good with policies.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Chief and I will work on.
Yeah, we'll get together and.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Actually, it'll probably work because football's over another few weeks.
Yeah, next Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah. And then we can.
Then we can have some time to, okay, yeah, focus on that. Okay.
And again, we can make that rich.
We'll make, make times.
And again, I don't think there's any problem. It always will backdate whatever you decide to, to tell you that she became full-time.
My question is, I did not work yesterday. Do I need to make up hours to be able to get my whole 30 whatever in this week?
Or can you retroactively pay her holiday pay sometime in November, October, December?
Of course I can.
I just didn't know if, if I needed to make those up.
No, I think I would work your normal four days.
Yeah, work your normal days. We'll, we'll discuss it.
We'll retroactive back all of those issues.
Yep.
That concludes my report. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Uh, road department?
All right, um, apologize for not making the last meeting. I was in a bad way with COVID. It's not fun. Um, obviously lots of important things happened, uh, since my last report. First item, the Segal Road, um, they completed paving it and striking it. I think it looks really good. Except for the people paved their driveways and contractor kind of got the striping. Yeah, what are you going to do?
Did you get complaints?
No. It was just, it, the road wasn't two weeks old. That's kind of sad, but it looked good. It rides well. Um, the total cost ended up being $7,000 more than their original, original bid. The reason being is we have had, not had good luck using standard four forty-eight spec asphalt on the hill because of when the trucks come down the hill and they break, it just folds the asphalt up and it becomes rippled and slides and eliminates and it's a mess. Um, so what we did several years ago was have both EB Road and Segal Road ground off. And they use what's called, well, the new spec is called 12.5 millimeter super pave, which is just fancy term for a different mixed design. That reduces shoving and, and de-laminating and, and folding up of the, you know, breaking and sliding. So that ended up being $7,000 more. The mix is twice as much and it's really a pair to work with because it's super sticky. I, I think it would have been a waste of money to use regular asphalt, you know, regular horizontal surface asphalt on that hill because we would have been grinding it all off and repaving here or two, maybe, paying truck traffic. But so the total ended up being still under the $200,000 threshold that the board proved. Meeting that whenever that happened, the total bill was 196,262 dollars and 20 cents, uh, to parrot paving materials. Second item.
Let's just re- remind everyone that that invoice is being paid for using American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Very helpful and I appreciate the board making that decision. Second item is the 2022, as Mr. Easton alluded to, the 2022 chip seal program has been completed by Ray Hanson Incorporated. That was all of Shimp Road from Oxford to Boomerang Shine. A portion of Moyer Road and a small portion of Kiefer Road. I thought all three of those areas turned out really well. We did actually get some confidence on that at first. But I thought they did a, a good job and they did it at a good time of the year too, which is usually what they do it kind of late. Run the risk of it being kind of chilly out and the stone not setting. I think they picked a good time of the year. Slid in there, uh, it's nice and warm. Um, third item. Back when Ms. Reed was trustee, I kind of got delegated to be the, uh, liquid petroleum gas person to go out for bids for the township. So I went ahead and did that again this year, got three quotes. For the 2022, 2023 heating season for the township. Apollo gas was at $2.04 2.049 per gallon. Pollak gas was 2.599 and Earhart was 1.939. So Earhart is who provided gas for the last two years. Um, they already have their digital sensors on both tanks that tell them how, what percentage we're at as they drive by. I went ahead and locked township's price in at, with Earhart at a dollar nine three nine per gallon, which was actually 21 cents cheaper than last year.
That's unbelievable.
That's amazing. So. So yeah, so that was actually a good thing.
I think we normally have the trustees approve that by resolution, even though you have already signed it.
You want to go ahead?
Retroactive. So I would suggest we do that again and we'll make that resolution 2022 dash 36.
Dollar ninety three nine from Earhart Gas.
Someone like to introduce that resolution?
I'd like to introduce, what was the resolution? I'm sorry?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Resolution number 2022 36, uh, for Earnhardt Gas at a dollar point nine three nine for the propane.
For a second?
Go ahead.
Okay. Any discussion of the resolution?
Thanks, Jim.
I'll call the role, Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution 2022 dash 36 is adopted.
And that's all I have in my reports.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
We got that estimate from Hauser for the parking lot. Still planning on trying to do that or what's the?
I think Lou and I talked about that, uh, prior to the COVID incident and we had decided that we're probably going to wait till spring.
It's going to be.
People were covered up with work. We're not going to get good prices and we're probably going to get better work when the weather warms back up.
So it's. We thought it was $50,000 as though, but it's actually 45.
Right. Yeah. The, the threshold for bidding, we thought was at 50,000. It's actually 45. So every estimate we got was over that. So now you're talking, having advertised for two weeks, having a bid opening, you know, all that. The, the parking lot needs it, but it's not like, it, it's not like it can't wait until spring. I think we'll agree.
Yes, absolutely.
We still have plenty of time to use the ARCA fund.
We have until the end of 2024 to use the ARCA fund. So we're not under any deadline at this point.
That's all I have.
Thanks. Do you have any zoning department?
Not a whole lot. Um, the zoning department wrote three permits in the month of September. It was a new home build on Creek Road, an in-ground pool on seven twenty-five and solar panels on Oxford Road. The proposed variance lot split at 10189 EB Road was tabled while more research is being done. As far as water issues and lots of issues actually. That was about how much. Um, there's a BZA meeting on Monday, October 17th at 7:00 PM concerning a variance and lot split on Shimp Road. And the zoning commission meeting that was previously scheduled for October 4th is now on Thursday, October 20th at 6:30. Um, we had to reschedule that due to the police department having international.
I'll just add a couple of things there. Um.
Before you, before you move on, Mrs. Close, do you have that copied? Like get a copy of that? I wasn't taking notes. It's quickly as you were talking.
So I had delivered the zoning resolution text changes to the Montgomery County Recorder's Office on nine fifteen. So that at least is recorded. Then I hand delivered the three zoning changes to the Recorder's Office on 10 722. And that included the Jacobs property on eighty-three oh four Dayton, Germantown Pike. They went from one half agricultural, one half business to, to all business to, remember that. Scaggs property on eighty-four sixty-eight Upper Miami's Burg Road. They went from about two to R1. That was back in 2019 and the Bremet property on EB Road that went from a agricultural R1 to OR1. That was one seven twenty-one. So I went ahead and delivered the hard copies of the zoning resolution changes to the BZA members at their meeting on 10 422. Unfortunately, three members were absent. So hopefully we'll deliver those changes to the rest of the members on the 10 1722 meeting. And I'll, uh, deliver those documents to the zoning commission on 10 222. So if we get caught up and then we can start a little redoing this. Uh, good. Good. Move on to the trustee reports. Mr. Potter?
Alrighty, um, I had a lot of, uh, work done at the, on the park board, uh, working on the MMI. And I headed that up. We got Scott Reader earlier in the year to come in and, and, uh, clear the, the hillside. Uh, he cleared about an acre and a half. He donated all of that time and money to do that. We did provide him diesel fuel. So we provided for him. And then, excuse me. The flagpole had a bend in it. So Tony Boyd, me and Tony Boyd, he rented a piece of, uh, lift, eighty-five footer. That's a, a flagpole was 75 foot, had a bend in it, 12 feet down. So we had to cut that and reweld it and get that bend out of it. The flagpole was 75 foot. It's now still 70 foot. So we got that fixed. I wire brushed it and painted it, put all new trucks and hardware at the top of it. We had a, I brought my flag home from, from my house and we flew it on, it was a festival. After Scott Reader did that earlier in the year, it started to grow back up again. We desperately needed to get grass seed on it. So I had Scott come back in and he hit it again. And then I got Norville, Lance Norville, uh, turf management out of Madison Township, Chad Norville. He came up and he seeded it. He, he, uh, worked the ground and he seeded it. He donated about $3,500 off of it, off of the cost, uh, to get the project done. Tony Boyd, he donated all of his time, discharged for the cost of the lift. We have Dave Short talk to SRM. Uh, they're donating 10 yards of concrete. I have John Longworth coming in, uh, sometime of, by the middle of November to, to remove the concrete uh, base around the flagpole to, to put it back like it was originally. And which is about a 10 by 10 square. Uh, with the 10 yards of concrete, I'm having him make a sidewalk, four-foot sidewalk. There'll be about a 70-foot sidewalk from the flag out toward the top of the hill. So with all that said, the money would, that was used to pay for this or that was being used to pay for it, the city of Germantown is going to fund in their budget, $10,000 to the MMI starting in 2023. But we did this work in 2022. So I got my hands slapped just a little bit. That's all right. So the, the city is getting $5,000 out of their general fund. And I want to, uh, make a resolution for the township asking the board to take $5,000 out of the park money for an emergency. To pay the, we just putting $5,000 in, the $10,000 will cover all the money that were out this year. And we had about 10 or $12,000 and donated. But there, uh, the mayor said he's, they all think we're years ahead of what they thought we would be this time. So I want to ask the board for the resolution of.
Me number 37, did you say which fund, the general fund?
I have a park fund.
The city used the general fund.
I will use whatever fund you guys think we should use.
Well, you're, you're making the resolution. I just want to make sure it's clear.
I mean, I would just want to use the park fund money. That's it was for.
That's why we hold it back for projects like this. So I have, I think that's appropriate and I think that's a good use of the money. The community. I mean, that's what it's for. That's why we hold it. So I'm 100%, I 100% agree that they should come from that.
Is there a second? You're, you're second. We're going to use the parks fund money. We want to give them 10,000. That helped them reimburse their general fund.
You can do that too.
Absolutely. Would like to do that. I would get them out of some hot water that I put them in. I didn't really put them in it. They agreed to it, but if you know what I mean.
Cause it seems a little, I won't say unfair, but just not equal balance for us to use.
I agree. A hundred percent.
The park fund.
I do. Appreciate it. So are you guys all right with that?
Yeah.
There was eight, at least $80,000 in that account, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's funny.
Yep.
So are you amending the resolution to go to 10?
Resolution to go to 10. And worse.
Were you second?
I'll second, yes.
Make sure to document this because I'll have to write that all into the minutes. Okay. Any discussion of the resolution?
I think that just, it, it reinforces why we, why we do the holdback going forward, that we can do projects like this when, when they arise. So I would please pass that on to the city that the reason we do this holdback is, is for special occasions just like this. So we, we can pass that information on. That's all.
I, I will do that. I actually had a meeting today or can I go on?
Oh, no, I'm good.
I actually had a meeting today with Judy and Tiffany. Um, they wanted some, they got some ideals about putting some lighting in, uh, lighting around us down Veterans Park. They just wanted my, some of my ideals. I think I had never met Judy.
Okay.
So she just wanted to meet me too. So, but they, they did come up about holding the money back. And she did bring up the, um, the contract per se that was made in like 2002 or whatever. And she talked about the cheap lot fills, we need to upgrade them to something more modern. But I think in there it says right now, 25% and 75%. It doesn't say anything about us holding back the 10% that, that we have. So I agree with that.
Right.
We need to get that figured out and then write. I'm not, it wasn't mad or nothing. She just bringing, bringing it up.
Judy's been talking ever since I started here about wanting to revise.
Revise.
All the joint agreements.
I think there's four of them.
And the ball's in their court.
Ball's in their court.
So the ball has been in their court for many years.
Okay. I will pass that all along.
And I told Judy that. They can, she can have her solicitor draft. New agreements, we'll review them and you all will decide whether you want to accept what they're proposing. Or we negotiate something different.
Okay. Yep. Sounds good. That's all for my report.
Okay. We need to vote on resolution 2022 dash 36.
Okay, we need to vote on resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-seven to use ten thousand dollars in the parks fund. To give to the city. Or their five thousand out of general and then our five thousand.
That's.
Any further discussion? Okay, Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-seven is adopted.
Hey, that's it.
That's it.
Mr. Stubbs?
I don't have too much tonight. The pool meeting last month, I don't believe there was a I couldn't make it on the Wednesday there. They did not have a quorum from what I understand. So we looked to meet again, not in October, but I from what I understand is November. The revenue from this past year exceeded last year's by fifteen thousand dollars. So they brought in more money this year, which is good. And overall, the season went well and I think when we discuss what our plans are for next season in November and hopefully grow as we've been growing the last several years. Our pool manager Devon Staubner has done a fantastic job getting people in there. He does a great job with our lifeguards. So look forward to meeting with them again in November. The cemetery. They've got a lot going on. They've had a lot of funerals and burials this week. They have, I think he said nineteen or twenty foundations to pour this week, hopefully before the weather gets too chilly. He's planning on getting those done. And our goal, and I told it said last month, we'd have a job description for Mark. We are still working on that. And our goal tonight, we we will be posting that on December first to have for our township to post, the city to post, probably Dayton Daily News and definitely the Germantown Press. So that will go out on December first. Police, I'd like to thank chief and the whole department for the Saturday or the Saturday night, the the National Night Out. Thank you. I got here late, last half an hour, forty minutes, but there was still a lot of people here. Unfortunately, I didn't get a hot dog, but you know, everybody else did. So that's okay. But it was. It was nice to see all the people here and all the community members. Saw a couple of kids from the junior high here as well. So that's nice to see the kids here and interacting with with all the events we had going on that night. I know the fire department was here. Was it public health that was also set up outside? So the senior center was in here. So just a nice night overall. The S. R. O., I think that's already been covered. I just I I think that's going to be a good thing for for the community going forward. One thing we need to talk about tonight is doing something for Lori. We weren't. We didn't get it for this month, but the plan is for November to have that done. So what planning needs to go in place? So that should be on a Monday, right? Where's November's?
On a Monday next month.
It is, okay.
Patrins Day is Friday.
Okay. Fourteenth. Okay. Member fourteenth. I'll provide. I'll provide cookies and whatever whatever other food you guys think we should provide for a reception for.
Sheet cake.
Texas sheet cake. Okay. I will put my request in. If not, I'll have cookies for sure. Yeah. What do? Go ahead.
Are you going to change subjects?
No.
Okay.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I just wanted, before you leave, Lori, I want to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Okay. I did send you, since I wasn't sure whether we were going to do it tonight or next month, a draft resolution. We can't really. I mean, we can talk about it in this meeting or if you have individual comments, you can order them to me. I'll make it changes and submit it to you with next month's report.
Okay.
For you to consider that night. So I got a little bit more information today from the chief, which I can add in if we make any other changes.
Okay, Chief, do you you look confused?
Pardon me? What did I tell you? You gave me the expanded report in October.
Oh. I didn't know what you're talking about.
Thank you very much.
I guess that was actually yesterday. Never.
There was something.
So so can you reach out to Lori and then any police officers that may have moved on from our department? And most definitely Chief Wilcox. That anyone you think she would appreciate seeing and we'll invite them all back. Do you want to do this at the beginning of our next meeting or prior to our next meeting? Have a reception for?
I think was I mentioned doing it like half hour?
Five thirty. So six thirty? Okay.
So that's what you guys mentioned.
Mm hmm.
And you could move right as soon as the meeting opens, move right into doing that.
Her resolution and pressures.
Little break and then start back up.
Yeah. Does that sound like a plan for everybody? Are we good with that? Okay, so.
And we'll get something out through the emails system. This is close, you and me.
Yeah, let everybody know. So if we can.
Wait, now get strapped it up. I'll be happy to send it to mine.
Hopefully, we have a full room next month to show our appreciation for Lori and her her dedication. Her many, many years of many, many, many years of dedication she had to the township. So we will plan on six thirty next week and then the meeting to follow will have a resolution right away. T. S. C., I think you're going to cover the T. S. C.
Yeah.
Okay. I know I had a resident on Baden Road reach out to me because he is under the impression they're not coming far enough down his road. So I sent an email to Lonnie at T. S. C. And he showed me a map and he showed me the address of a resident that had already called and that resident was covered. I'm not sure if the address. But they're not going all the way down Baden, but they're going partially down Baden. But it's a. It's a private company. I can't tell them what to do. So I I asked them if they could continue down the road, but that's up to them ultimately. If they choose to do that or not. All right, that concludes my report.
There was some mention at the the Germantown Council that the pool had to turn away some parties because they were such a which is a good thing.
Yeah, so I think we'll probably increase our price for the parties for sure. Yeah, they had to turn some people away.
Yeah. Such a good demand. Good. That's it?
Yep, that's all. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Just a couple, a couple of things. I just want to comment on Philip Luff's presentation about electric aggregation. The German Township did indeed vote on electric and gas aggregation back in the November twenty or two thousand and three general election. However, the electrical aggregation was voted down three seventy-one to three fifty-four, so seventeen seventeen votes. Gas aggregation was voted down, which doesn't make whole lot of sense because we don't have any natural gas supplier. Was voted down three fifty-seven to three thirty-one. So if you actually you can actually go to energychoice.Ohio.gov and you can compare electricity prices and companies available in our area. A. S. A. S. Current generation supply rate is ten point nine one cents per kilowatt hour and that's through five only through five thirty-one of twenty-three. So prices range from eight point nine eight cents per kilowatt hour to twenty-one cents per kilowatt hour, but most were in the ten to eleven cents range. So if it's something we want to consider, we would actually have to bring it up to the ballot next year since it failed before. So we have plenty of time, but I think until, even Mr. Luff. As I understand it, though, the elector could approve it, but then you don't have to actually take action to implement it. At least you have the approval behind you. So it's whatever you all force to decide.
Again, the November twenty twenty-three ballot may be a time to to think about it. Since it wouldn't be a special election, we'd have to pay some.
When do we have to know voted on it November eleventh?
The deadline for that would be sometime, I think, early August. But we're going to definitely have to do. Which levy did I say?
The pool.
The pool levy. And there probably will be little if anything on that primary. So you'll probably end up doing that in November, too. So, Mr. Kuhn, you want to go with an update on the J. Board?
Not much to update. Got an email this today from Randy Steiber. Still waiting on the federal I. D. Number. So it was a fight for the first of September. He talked to somebody at the I. R. S. And they're faxing the a resubmission of the application. So that's about where we're at now. I do know the school sent notices to the high school. I think they know that this was coming so that people could be prepared when their check changed once it was implemented. So the Mr. Steiber has been most eager to get this going to the point where he was asking the attorney if there was any way we could go ahead and start the collections, even the federal I. D. Numbers things like that. And fortunately, the attorney suggested several pitfalls to that approach and put the kibosh on it. So we're still waiting. Federal I. D. I'm sure once it comes in, we'll probably have another meeting up here. So I'll probably be approaching again. And we'll go ahead then and get our bank accounts all situated and start collecting. And before I sit back down, Mr. Potter, thank you for your efforts over. I didn't grow up in this area, but growing up even in Beaver Creek, I came out here as a kid for church camp. And so, yeah, that whole place up there has got, I mean, special meaning to people all over this region, just from when it was Camp Miami. I appreciate all you're doing to preserve it. It was a shame those buildings are gone.
Shame the buildings are gone.
Yep. Yeah, I appreciate all your hard work and coordinating people and I'm sure you're pulling in favors from people.
I'm using a lot of my favors.
Yep. Yeah, I appreciate you doing all that.
There was a Facebook post talked about the cost of the new school, basically, that it's coming up. Well, they don't have a lot of the estimates in, but the total cost is coming up more than what was budgeted for the surprise. Yeah, so they're gonna. I guess the process, they go back to the state and see if they will contribute some more.
And Mr. Groom can correct me if I'm wrong, but when we had that meeting for the J. Board over at the construction site, the people from Conger actually said, well, we haven't even sent stuff out for bid. And because I don't remember the exact term they used. It was like contractor assumes risk or something that nature, but basically, yeah, here's your pot of money. Try and make it work within budget and having much luck with that. It's going to be interesting to see how all this goes.
I I heard the same thing. They had no did not have the contractors.
Because we ask them, you know, hey, who are your, so we can start notifying April stuff. Well, we don't even have subs yet, so. It was an interesting meeting. Very much so.
Remember, there was a question brought up actually by Mr. Mr. Heaton. We were talking about the possible prohibition of annexation of the dead property, not part of the contract. But I guess it. I looked that up in the O. R. C. And it says, no proceeding pursuant to chapter seven oh nine of the Verizon Code that proposes the annexation to merger of or consolidation with the municipal corporation of any unincorporated territory within a joint economic developed district may be convinced at any time between the effective date of the contract creating the district and the date that the contract expires, terminates, or is otherwise rendered unenforceable. So basically, we take the township, we will have annexations that were covered. Based on that property.
Based on that.
Just on that jet.
Just on the jet. Just the jet property.
Right.
Some doesn't need to be. Some jet contracts have included provisions where the municipality doesn't annex any property.
Right. And when I was at the O. T. A., the person I was in the J. A. conference. And that was apparently pretty standard that that should have been added in our contract, but unfortunately I was there after the contract had already been.
No one told us that that's standard language.
That's pretty standard. It should be in there that there should be no.
At least as far as the jet property, they can't.
And that makes total sense.
Right.
They wouldn't have need a jet at that point, but would have been nice if we would have.
Yeah, should have definitely.
Protect the whole township. Again, I I think we need to make sure to update the township Facebook page and the police and fiscal officers email and webpage on the date of upcoming meetings. I think we're doing a little bit of slack, a little bit of slack on that, especially on the zoning stuff. So so people at least know. I attended the fire oversight meeting on October third. The highlights include Chief Aldrich stated that call volumes are about five percent up from twenty twenty-one and we're up about ten percent. So I guess that's a good thing. Staffing is a continuing problem, but it's getting slightly better due to pay increases in July first and September first of this year and the start of the twenty-four hour in-house paid personnel. So that's that's keeping her helping staffing wise. Fire department has hired a full-time lieutenant. Josh four started October first. That's basically takes some of the pressure off the chief. Calls all the time, basically, so. Germantown Fire M. S. Is celebrating Fire Prevention Week ten nine through ten fifteen. And Fire prevention is ten nine through ten fifteen, but they're they're celebrating it October third through October nineteenth by hosting multiple fire safety classes per preschool through third grade. The firehouse will also be open October fifteenth for the Saturday night nightmare with tours and free food. Dayton Children's will also have a booth. So the members of the Fire Oversight Committee received an email on ten seven from Chief Aldrich. The Germantown Fire M. S. Is considering financing a new fire engine at five hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. If wait, the costs are going to be between six hundred fifty thousand and seven hundred twenty thousand dollars. So I don't know how that's financed and it's going to happen. Putting adding another fire engine. So I attended the Germantown City Council meeting on October third, the highlights during the council's work session, which unfortunately is not televised, so you can't see it. They're still considering a downtown Dora, which is a designated outdoor refreshment area that likely will include the historic downtown district and Veterans Park. It's going to be every week, Thursday through Sunday, four to ten year round. So what's the police think about that? So you're basically open up. You get you get this cup from the three places that sell all Laos, Florentine and Don's Pizza Palace. So you get you get a cup and it'll have a sticker that says that you can take it outside and drink anywhere in anywhere within the door. So you you can take it over Veterans Park and District. I can't see the. I really can't see the advantage of having a door in Germantown. They're going to have anybody who wants to. They had a committee that the door committee that made recommendations to the the area. And the times, you know, during the year and the little label.
Well, could, you know, they're they're thinking of this door thing. So could that be why they're wanting to put new lights in Veterans Park?
Make sure.
I don't know about what lights you're talking about. The only lights I was talking about was Christmas lights.
So I I thought that was just kind of interesting. I don't really understand why they're doing that. They're considering a community investment area for downtown that will offer tax abatements for new investments. They can can discuss continuing a continuing a quarterly printed newsletter. And there was a short discussion of costs and whether they want the schools, the township included, as done in the past. They gave them no indication that we wanted to be included. This this occurred a while back. They they had a didn't do that well. So can't see putting the the money into that. There was a short discussion on electrical aggregation with other entities that are part of the Miami Valley Communication Council. So that's basically all cities. Germantown did pass their ordinance to allow aggregation twenty years ago, but I couldn't actually find it. I went back to twenty two and twenty oh three and could not find the the vote. So they did this. They said they did pass it. So they're thinking about the two. Senior Oversight Committee scheduled for ten six was canceled due to sickness. I think the last thing with just a quick discussion, should we continue using Webex? Are there alternatives? Had problems with the last trustee meeting that we couldn't record the meeting. We had troubles with the last B. Z. A. Meeting, which was very important, but it honked out after fifteen minutes. Are there other? Does anybody, you know, chief? Do you have any opinion on the Webex?
Because you you come to most meetings. If you were to not be able to make it.
First of all, I'd never had any problem. Webex is a little funny because if you don't have the app on your you'll download it.
Right.
And install it. But I also run a meeting every two weeks myself. I'm a subscriber to Webex. So I own the the rights to it and I haven't had any serious problem. However, I keep getting this. They're updating. They're updating. Which indicates for me from a software author standpoint that they're constantly fixing bugs. Now, today I got another notice that there's going to be a training session where it's interactive, always before the training sessions have been a video watch. And they they are interacting. And, uh, they, they are interactive to some point that this one is supposed to be. Where people can actually talk. But that, that all aside. I've run a meeting every two weeks and we don't have any trouble.
I know last month, for some reason it wouldn't connect to the network. So.
And I believe Scott thought it was an update.
Yeah, I think he indicated to me that the problem was that it hadn't updated.
Right.
The WebEx. So WebEx was operating up here and the one we had hadn't updated. So.
Right. So that wasn't no fault of our own. It wasn't a loose wire as indicated. Uh, it was a network connection issue. So I think, you know, the school does YouTube and they broadcast it live and then it just automatically goes there. I don't, I don't know if that's free. I don't know if that's an option that we could go into because it just automatically puts it there. I think I, the question I have for you specifically, Mr. Groone, is if you can't make it to a meeting, is it important that you watch that meeting live? Or that it's there the next day that you could watch it? So if we were to report your personal opinion, I know you're the one that would use, most likely to use the WebEx if you can.
I am not sitting here. I don't miss.
You don't miss. Right. So.
I, I haven't had connectivity problems. Now, obviously I've been here, so I, I can't speak to. The times when you didn't have the connectivity.
Right.
Nor what the connectivity problem was. A number of reasons it could happen, but in any case. I would be online. So your question then, can I watch it two days from now?
Right.
And be okay with that?
Right. That's the question.
The rea- the primary reason I would want to attend is I can raise my hand and add a question or do a chat.
Right.
That's the real advantage. You can participate. Watching it two days later is not participation.
Correct.
Observation. So, uh, my vote would be to. Be here.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You guys didn't always have WebEx, correct?
We started doing this, I think, in April.
But you had a different program before.
No, no, we've always used WebEx.
Was it? Okay. I thought that was.
I think Haley tried to use Google.
Meet.
Meet and that didn't work and that didn't work.
Okay.
We, we never broadcast these pre-pandemic. That was once the pandemic. Actually. It was. I, I've used WebEx since like two thousand. You know, the other big one out there is an alternative.
Right.
I hadn't really thought about YouTube. The biggest issue with YouTube. Is, um, I mean, there's a political activist that I heard familiar with, like YouTube stream. And you can type in chats, uh, to interact with the board, but they. Basically limited to one camera. So you couldn't do like where Mr. Heaton turns on his camera when he does his report. Or say, I, I see Mr. Jacoby is online here. If he wanted to participate, he could turn on his camera from home and participate. You wouldn't have that option.
Okay.
So you would with Zoom, you do with WebEx. Probably a couple of other services out there.
Is there any way to have a meeting without a code so people can just? Log on, uh, just get on the website and have our access code and there's no login. You're just.
I, I know with Zoom because I participate in some Zoom meetings from time to time and there, there is no code with Zoom.
Okay.
I think you can put one in. Yeah. Didn't think. That WebEx was mandatory for the codes, but I think somebody here was into it. To me, it makes no sense to have a password.
Right. Right. And that's what I was trying to simplify.
In the early months, we were using WebEx. All you did was click on the hyperlink. You automatically let yourself in. For whatever reason, in recent months. Probably since the first of twenty twenty-two, we've had to be. Allowed in. And you have to, like tonight, I had to type in six or seven letters or whatever.
I think there's a, there may be a setting. That you can set it to not do that, but we'd have to look into perhaps. Sean and. Jeremy and I can look at that this weekend, see if we can find some settings.
Yes. Certainly Zoom became the.
Those are the people who join my meeting. My meeting and they pop up on the screen.
No password? No.
Well, there's, there is a meeting number and a password.
You have to have the meeting.
In the invitation that I send.
Okay.
Okay. Now, if you, if you don't have the join meeting in an email, which all the people that attend mine do. Then they have to have the meeting. Okay. They run WebEx, which is installed on their computer, the little app. And, uh, you click on join meeting, then you have to put the meeting number in. But all my, all the people that join mine are invitees. And that email goes out to, I don't know how many people.
Okay.
I mean, I use the hyperlink that's in the email that I sent to everyone on my list.
And that's an email and I did too. That's how I joined.
So it's easy to get on.
App.
So whether it's WebEx, whether we go with, um, Zoom. Go to meeting and there are so many different options. It pretty much, my understanding is work a lot, very similar.
They do.
We've already paid for a year's subscription to WebEx. Who now pay for another service, Zoom or whatever?
Well, another thing I would suggest is to find out what corporate America is using. You're going to find WebEx at the top dog.
Well, a lot of corporations actually use Microsoft Teams because, or like all the internal meetings because it's embedded with Outlook and all the rest of it.
I think with, with Shawna being here, running it all the time, they may make it.
Well, and you made a suggestion that I buy an audio recorder as a backup option as well. So if I'm here and I can see, like, I, I'm checking, I'm making sure that it's recording and doing everything it's supposed to be doing. Um, I can also do an audio recording. That way if this fails for some reason, we've got it. And then if this does not fail, I just delete that recording. We don't need to. I mean, if I'm going to purchase one for those BCA meetings and zoning commission meetings anyway. I mean, there's no reason to not use it.
We have a little hand recorder that was used prior to. COVID for all meetings. In my office, we just haven't brought it out ever since COVID because we have this option, which. In my opinion, is so much better than just a audio recording that.
Now, it doesn't seem like tonight we've had any issues. I've been trying to keep a good eye on it. So fingers crossed, knock on wood. Yeah, but. I think, I think a backup audio recording isn't a bad idea. Like I said, no harm, no foul. If you don't need it, we delete the recording.
Especially for the zone.
Yeah, not a big deal, but.
Well, and actually when we use the audio recorder. Mr. Heaton's talking about, I would, a lot of times use my phone and I turn on the voice recorder and set it in front of me just as a backup in case something happened. The old recorder in your desk.
Yeah, I think, I think there's the potential for anything to fail. With internet and all that. So I think always having a backup option is never a bad.
I think we've had a lot better, a lot more public participation since COVID by using online streaming. And I would say since we pay for WebEx, I would recommend that we just finish the year out with, which I recall is March eighth of timeframe next year. And if we want to consider a change, let's do some planning a month or two ahead of that. Be my suggestion.
I have one more question. You may have a string across the floor.
So where's the, do you have any?
The router. Where's the router? It's right there. That's the phone. All of our. That five's run through the phone system.
Oh, it's all in that starfish thing.
So you're already on.
Yeah, you just run a cat five.
You're not running Wi.
Yeah, we are running Wi-Fi, but if you wanted to hardline it, the, the cat five cable could go from there to there.
I thought it did now.
No, I don't think so. I'm looking out.
And that's a ten foot. I'll bring you a piece of wire.
No, we have some. Terminate it.
Okay. Well, we'll go with the backup recorder, you know, again, talk about that.
And hardwiring it then would eliminate some issues we're gonna have too. So.
Have a microphone. So is the one that is in your desk doesn't work.
Yeah, we, we, we found the recorder, but we didn't find the microphone or anything. So I don't know if Haley did something. I'm, I'm not gonna.
Okay.
We're gonna get a new one. Right, that's it. Anything else on the WebEx? Basically, last thing I'll go for, uh, any, any old business?
I have some old business.
Oh.
Or maybe it's new business. I'm not real sure. I'd like to publicly recognize and commend Scott Hamilton for his astuteness and quick thinking. September sixth, Scott and I were traveling eastbound on Sugar Street approaching the Route Four overpass when Scott noticed a vehicle. In the brush and trees that was barely noticeable. He recognized this vehicle was out of place and I didn't even see it. And he immediately had me contact. The officer on duty for Germantownship. Uh, officer, police officer Jones arrived in the scene. He discovered the driver had missed the stop sign. On one twenty-three at State Route Four and gone through the guardrail. Down the, down the side of that magnet all the way to the bottom. No headlights, no flashers. I had no cell phone. Uh, the driver was severely injured and had told the officer he'd been sitting there for over two hours. I believe Scott's keen eye, quick thinking could possibly save the gentleman's life. Survive or messed up. I believe Scott went above and beyond the title of maintenance superintendent with his actions and deserves to be publicly recognized.
All right, thank you.
You know, he saw it. I didn't see it. It was barely daybreak. See that car there? I don't know what you're talking about. It's in a bad place as he looked up.
Seeing where it comes from.
Even seen, and you couldn't tell. I mean, it wasn't a path. He must have.
That was the second. Or the first, it was in like a week.
And then almost a week later. There was two.
It's the second one.
No, I think it was. I think one walked away, didn't he?
Yeah, we had to find. One of them, we had to go.
That was the.
Or somebody found him walking with. Some adult beverage somewhere. Well, Scott, thank you again for.
I had something I missed.
Over to you, Luke.
Maybe you heard something about this, Jake. Did you see anything about, um. At Daniel's Peace Park about Scott Wilder? He bring, he brings up engraving a boulder to go in a similar. Daniel's Peace Park Cemetery section. This is there.
It's not, it's not a Germantown Union Cemetery.
I didn't know he had a cemetery. I didn't know that was a new thing that he was.
It's nothing that we've had down there. So it must be on his side somewhere. Yeah.
I didn't know if he would. Still coming up about the acre that he was trying to donate.
No, I haven't heard any more about that.
Is this the rock that's in memory of his mother?
In a cemetery section. Of Daniel's Peace Park. I didn't know there was a cemetery section. Not yet.
Yes, to me, I.
Okay.
We're not, we're unaware of the cemetery.
Okay.
It involves us in any way.
Okay, that's what I was wanting to know.
Same thing, Luke. Same thing.
Yeah.
So, uh, if no other old business, uh, we received and some of the residents have received a letter from TSC Communications. In our ongoing efforts to update and improve your service, we will soon be starting construction of a new fiber to the home project in your area. TSC personnel will be bearing fiber optic cable down your road as well as bringing fiber optic drops to your home and installing network interface devices. At the home. So allow us to provide with fiber to the home, tele, telecommunications services, including telephone, high-speed fire, fiber internet. And we're planning to provide streaming local and national television. On completion, we will be able to provide you with the newest gigaspire technology, providing internet speeds up to under one gigabits per second. Yes, that's right. Gigabit, not megabit. This is one thousand twenty-four megabits per second. In addition, our traditional phone service will be available in your home. So if you're interested in having this new technology at your home, please complete the closed drop, bury permission form and return to our office. So basically since they're coming into our property, we need to fill this out, send it in. So.
From my understanding, that's not, that's not a, a contract of commitment. So even though you signed it, even though they bring the cable to the building, it doesn't commit you to subscribe. So.
Allows them to bring it there.
Actually generates a work order for them.
Oh, okay.
That, that form, when it hits their computer, a work order for this company. To guys. To actually install a box on the side of your house and fiber under the ground. To the, um, what's that thing called? Yeah. Well, they don't, and they didn't take it under the road. My pedestal's on the other side of the road. So they just called it up and it's on a plastic pipe there. But that form generates the work order for them to do that. The, the conduit's not down the road yet.
Anyway, I'll, I'll work with Mark and we'll fill this out and send this in so they can.
Maybe able to do it online.
Yeah, I scanned one of them.
Yeah, I've scanned. Uh, if that's it, anything else? TSC Officer.
Try to make these, but I'm never.
Uh, if that's it, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? I doubt it. We are adjourned at eight twenty-six according to my computer.
Thank everyone for coming as usual.